Two thousand twenty-two, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to Hold to Order. Roll call, please.
April.
Here.
Here.
Prefers Abson.
Here.
Thompson, Justice Center, Abson Hicks.
Him.
Here.
We have a quorum. First item of discussion this morning is related to rental registration fees, and we'll call on April Zumhoff and Guy Taylor.
Good morning, committee members. This is just pretty much a question, and the memo that was provided to you, it gives a history of what the rental registration program was. This question is being driven by actions that were taken in two thousand nineteen when we made our rental ordinance more restrictive. And the intent of the standard rental registration was originally prior to nineteen was to give landlords the option to either opt in or opt out of being inspected and encourage those properties that choose to be inspected to be rewarded for being inspected, making sure they're meeting the minimum requirements. Standards were those that felt that they didn't want to be inspected, and as long as they were performing well, they would not be running the best practice until something triggered them to come into the best practice. The intent of the standard fee also was in two thousand nineteen to gradually increase that fee to eventually get all properties inspected within our community. And that's the question I have before you is, do you guys want to increase the standard unit fee for rental registration, which is those units that are not being inspected? And there are slowly standard units coming into the rental registration through either transfer of sale, or issues are arising where we have to go in and inspect, and then they become part of the inspection program. But the question is, is do you want to increase the fee for just the standard rental registration for five dollars per unit, and do you want to just do it for two thousand twenty-four? Or do you want to have it increased each year after that to slowly phase out the standard rental registration?
Can you give us an idea of what the breakdown is, is how many units, I mean, just roughly, like in the community, and how many are standard, how many have opted in?
How many are participating?
Because ideally, ideally, it would seem to me like we want to get everyone on the same plate as far as inspections without, you know, if we feel our inspection system, registration system is fair and adequate, then I think all the units should be under that in the city.
So I do have a report. I don't have numbers right off the top of my head, but I can say that it's about seventy-five are in the best practice program.
Seventy-five percent?
Seventy-five percent, and about twenty-five, twenty-five to thirty percent are in the standard program.
Generally speaking, is it the, is it the experience of staff that the twenty-five percent that are not in the best practices, generally speaking, is there a reason that they're not in there? Are they older units? Are they, are they, are they, you know, looking to not be inspected the same way that a newer unit is, for example?
I think it's varying reasons. You know, some feel that they don't want, you know, government invading, and then what they feel is their business right to operate a business. The other part is, you know, they may not pass rental registration inspections. So, you know, that was also the caveat is prior to two thousand eighteen, to give people the opportunity, if they felt that their units were substandard, to maybe do those maintenance items, repairs, work with our building officials to pull the right permits to make sure everything's done to code, and then have the option to come in. You know, and then there is the share that they know that their units would not pass, and they are substandard. And, you know, the intent of this program is the city of Fergus Falls should believe that our community wants to provide healthy, safe, livable properties that do not decrease the valuation of our community.
Sure.
And that's just, that's just good business practice, and that's what we should want for citizens in our community.
Yeah. Because I know that over the years, this, this, you know, this topic obviously brings out a lot of passion in people, a lot of strong feelings. But ultimately, I think what you said is true. Like, my, from my perspective, if we have a system in place that we believe is an adequate system, protects people with it, and that is at the same time not overbearing on property owners, then that's a system that should be in place, and we need to get there, in my opinion. But I'd be interested to see here what the--
So we're not, we're not suggesting that the best practice kind of program goes up, only the kind of the standard rental program?
That was my only request, because that was originally discussed back in two thousand nineteen.
I think we're, we're trying to move the dime, as it were, so.
Do others agree that we're hoping to get everyone into the best practices?
Yep.
I might be--
No, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I agree.
I'd make the motion that we accept the five dollar increase.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Scott?
I think just in general, the cost of everything's going up. To see a fee increase from twenty to twenty-five, you could say that we're doing it because we have to increase fees. And for that reason alone, I support it.
Thanks, Scott. So the recommendation is to the council to increase the two thousand twenty-four fee schedule from two thousand twenty-five. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. That motion carries. Thank you, April.
Do you guys just want to do that one time, or do you guys want to do perpetual after two thousand twenty-four?
I think we should, I think we, in my opinion, let's bring, let's bring it each year and see where we're at. Thank you, April.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, though. It says twenty twenty-four.
It should be twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
Our twenty-three registrations are already out.
Okay.
So it will actually be--
All right. Item number two is a discussion on the purchase of a garbage truck, and we'll call on Public Works Director Guy Taylor. Good morning, Guy.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor. As Mr. Quomby just mentioned, prices are going up everywhere. So before you this morning, I'm recommending the city purchase a two thousand twenty-three Freightliner M2 106 dual steer truck. It's our regular residential garbage truck with the sidearm pickup. It is an increase from the last time we purchased in two thousand nineteen of about twenty-seven percent. So, purchase price is three hundred twenty-two eight fifty-six seventy-two. And I, as I mentioned in the memo, proposing we keep the truck that's being replaced in the fleet and use it as a backup truck. With supply chain issues, when we have breakdowns, we're waiting for parts a lot of times now. And scheduling staff then to complete routes just becomes a problem. And so if we just have a backup truck that will get limited use, but will still be a reliable backup that will help to just complete the routes in a timely fashion, keep the residents happy, and then also reduce some overtime costs. But so the proposal, purchase price is three twenty-two eight fifty-six seventy-two, like I said, and it's covered with what's been budgeted for equipment purchases, which will come out of two thousand twenty-three's budget. So if that's acceptable, we will order this truck and wait for about sixteen months for it to be delivered.
Thanks, Guy. Just a question. I don't have that memo for me, but the twenty-seven percent increase, when's the last time we bought a garbage truck?
Two thousand nineteen.
Wow. So it's twenty-seven percent just in those three years. And it, as you mentioned, it is in the equipment purchase plan. That's--
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
One second.
Krista, any questions for Jim? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Guy. Item number three is a discussion on an ordinance related to THC product sales, and we'll call on our community development manager, Clara Back. Morning, Clara.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Yes, so we are starting to look at a broader THC ordinance. If you recall, not too long ago, we went through a zoning update with Planning Commission to help start the regulation of THC. Some conversations within the county at large have changed what the city was originally intending, which was not to overregulate. At this point, based on the county's idea of going for a moratorium of all sales, and the caveat that they currently have in there that if a city has its own regulations in place that meet certain requirements that we could opt out, we feel the best thing to do for our businesses who are already operating under the summer two thousand twenty-two state legislation is to put in place our own ordinance that helps regulate at a city level and requires licensing, compliance checks, et cetera. So what you have in your packet is a draft of that ordinance. The hope would be to go for first reading in December with the understanding that this is the first time that you're seeing this, and that there may be significant comments or changes that you'd like made, so we can be a little bit flexible with that timeline. At this point, the county has not, as far as I'm aware, set a date for when they would have their vote on a moratorium. They have had their public hearing already a couple weeks ago now, and so they're, I think they're kind of collating all of that information to decide how they want to move forward. So we maybe have a little bit of flexibility, but we do want to make sure that we're maintaining a timeline that gets, gets this in our books in a timely way.
So just turn that timeline again. December fifth, first reading, so presumably within in January, we would have plenty of time to discuss, make any changes that council sees necessary, still put it in place before any more returns go in place.
Yeah, that's our, that is our goal.
So plenty of time for the public and the council to weigh in as we go through the process of the readings.
I would say so, yes.
I can't speak on behalf of the county, but in talking to county staff, they're maybe targeting February first if things move forward, which doesn't give us a ton of flexibility because if we move on this timeline, where December fifth is the first reading, it won't become effective till about the middle of January, second week of January. So maybe have one extra meeting we can build in, but to ensure there's not a lapse of the business being able to operate, we want to be mindful of potentially that February first date, assuming it moves forward.
But it doesn't, yeah.
We don't know if that'll be the case, but--
But it is a process of we'll see an ordinance, have a chance to comment on it, make corrections or--
Yes.
additions to it.
I had a few questions. On the, on, depending on this certificate of liability insurance that covers the applicant's sales of THC, are we, I mean, are we looking to do this on an annual basis, and so things like that can be prorated to try to get? The other thing was, it says movable place of business, and a license shall be issued to a movable place of business. So does that mean that you wouldn't be able to have it like the farmer's market?
The way that the language is now, that would be correct. They, their license would cover the actual brick and mortar location, but not anything outside of that. That might be a place that we want to have some discussion. This is what I've seen in other communities. But we could maybe discuss it differently here if we felt we wanted to.
And then under zoning, ordinance applies. I wonder if we should sort of like state the zones? Yeah, you know, what actual zones? It says zoning ordinance applies. Now, the license shall be issued for a location not zoned for the sales. But I wonder if we shouldn't actually state what the zone--
Or we could, we could put in the section number potentially, so that they could just pop right over there if they need to. That's, that's a good--
Then, then I wondered, it says a sign supplied by the city. I wonder if we shouldn't have a draft of the sign, an example of what the sign is? And then there was the other thing that onsite consumables prohibited. I think a lot of time they give like samples away. So how would you handle sort of samples? You know, if they break a packet of gummies out and they give you a gummy, technically they're breaking the law.
Yeah, that's something we could discuss. Liquor stores can do sampling. I mean, they can have a bottle of wine open and give samples, so maybe that's something we change.
Yeah, to write, write it, you know, but at least write it in the, so.
Yeah, this, the, the liability one, if it's the same as liquor, which I assume it's padded after, it's just a policy that's, that they're, it's not a prorated thing, it's just a blanket, they have to entire calendar year.
Because it's annual?
Yeah, not like a license. A prorated license, but not the insurance.
Okay.
Exactly. If someone takes a business license, if someone takes a liquor license mid-year, we'll prorate that for them. We can do something along those lines here as well, but that liability insurance--
Calendarian, right. Those might kind of all be comments.
Perfect, and we can, we can just address these as we go along, right? Like, just take this in and have this. Any other questions? I'm going to tell Scott.
Got a few. I think that some of the question regarding sampling, you can compare it to alcohol, for example, with sampling there, but we wouldn't do the same thing with cigarettes. You wouldn't see people breaking open a package of cigarettes and say, hey, try one of these, try one of those. And so as you're looking at where this language came from, some of it seems to have come with, you know, a history or, you know, an influence, you might say, from what the tobacco ordinances say. Some of it seems to have come from the alcohol side, if you want to look at it that way. I don't have a problem with the restriction on sampling. I think that that's reasonable. Again, given that this is brand new to us, I think that being more restrictive rather than less gives us chances to change things down the line a little bit, for what that's worth. That would also apply to the question of whether we would allow sales at a farmer's market or other movable places. I think being more restrictive, again, initially is probably in our best interest, rather than less. I would have appreciated hearing from our police chief, and maybe before we go very much further with this, we could have him come and give us his thoughts on this. When I was at the meeting that the county did last week, the week before, the county sheriff was there to express some opinion from, you know, that side of the question. I don't think it would be wrong to generally say that he wasn't in favor of this product being available and was trying to, you know, protect our youth and was essentially supporting the county's movement toward a moratorium. In the whole scheme of things, it seems that the state has kind of put us in a pickle here. And we would have been, I think it's, it's weird that all, you know, Fergus as well as any other city could come up with their own set of rules, and we could have, you know, dozens of different combinations of rules on something like this across the state. Probably one other area that we could talk a little bit more about would be the penalty side of things, where the licenses have got violations, where you've got a hundred dollar fine, two hundred dollar fine, suspensions, things like that. My sense of the, what's been suggested here is that they're pretty light penalties, and I would like to see some more substantial penalties in there, and maybe suspension after three violations rather than four. We could probably take a look at some of those things. But I'd sure like to hear from Kyle.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, I think they're all good questions, and we'll continue to address them as we move on. Thanks, Clara and staff for the work on this. I guess I would just say that when we, when we talk about local control, we want local control, that goes for the tough decisions as well as the easy ones. So we want local control, and we'll do the best to make sure that our community and our businesses are affected properly as best we can. Any other questions or comments?
And you can feel free to send me anything offline, too, that I can incorporate into a new draft. Thanks.
Thank you, Clara. Now, there's a request of action to move this to the council for to discussion, first reading on Monday night?
I'll say, Your Honor.
Thanks, Justin. Someone like the--
I'll second.
Krista, further comment?
I suppose if we, I'll email leave some comments and--
And we can modify this as we go along with every, with every reading, too. Everyone feel comfortable with that?
Yep.
Just moving a little along in order to meet the deadline?
As far as how the process, then, there'd be a second reading?
Yeah.
And then there's an approval following that?
Sixty days, it?
So are we talking, how many meetings?
After the second reading, it has to be published in the newspaper, and then it's effective fifteen days after.
Fifteen.
And it just becomes effective? There's not another action that we take after a second reading? Correct?
Thank you. So we have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday. And a second, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Clara. Next up is Clara Back, our community development manager, to discuss shoreline management.
Yes, this has been a, just a fun time with ordinances. So back in two thousand twenty-one, the DNR reached out to the city and let us know that our shoreline management ordinance was essentially out of compliance with what the state requires for an ordinance at a city level. We had not included water, bodies of water that had been annexed into the city over the years. And then in looking at the ordinance, we really hadn't touched it in, I don't know, probably about thirty, thirty-ish years. So we took, if staff has been working on this behind the scenes, we took it to Planning Commission at their last meeting to make some updates based on the DNR's model ordinance. Planning Commission decided at that point that they wanted really only to make the changes that the DNR was requiring. So what you have in front of you is just the required updates to our shoreline management ordinance that include an increased number of the water bodies and their designations, which we hadn't updated in a while. So it includes that, it includes some places where our language wasn't quite up to date with what the state had for, like setbacks, things like that. So we did some updates there as well. And then another place that we looked at was our planned unit development section, which falls under our shoreland management. One thing that we have not had in there, and that has been recommended to us through the dairy RFP processes, to have some density requirements. So we did add some density language in there for PUDs that are happening within a shoreland management zone. So those are the updates before you today. We, again, are on a little bit of a timeline with this one. They would like to see these changes made as quickly as possible, since the deadline technically is December twenty-first. So we are working as quickly as we can to get those made and approved by the DNR and approved by you as well.
Thanks, Clara. Questions for Clara? Yes, Scott?
A couple. I guess it's another example of state agencies kind of putting us in a pickle, or pickles today. One of the details that I noticed on page twenty-nine of our packet, under the zoning questions, was a height of structures. And it says, "All structures must not exceed thirty feet in height, except churches and non-residential agricultural structures." When I take a look at an example for, like, the dairy property, which we're hoping to see develop soon, I can imagine buildings going in there that would be taller than thirty feet, if you've got, you know, apartments or condos or things like that. So I went from there to look at the list of the different properties or the different designations, and there's these different names for things, whether they're natural environment or a general use and things like that. And unfortunately, there's not a map attached with this. There's just names for things and some things that are unnamed. So I was having a hard time kind of placing what's what. So it'd be helpful to see a map included that identifies where all these things are, and whether or not, you know, in a case like this, that specific place would be affected by whatever we go on here.
Yeah, and I'll just, sorry to interrupt for just one second, but that thirty foot is what we have in our zoning code elsewhere for the height of buildings. So that's, that was updated to match the rest of our zoning updates that have been done over the last couple of years.
And that's probably good and probably appropriate. And, you know, given that we have a process for getting a variance or getting some kind of a conditional use or something like that, I think there would be a way for us to deal with something. But I wouldn't want to have people look at some of this and say, well, I guess we can't do it, and not even try because they think it's never, you know, it's not possible. There's a lot of details here, though, and that's just one area where you could get hung up.
But hear you loud and clear on the map, that's a great idea. We have, we have been putting those together. We're also working on a GIS layer, so that when we have our new system, you can toggle that on and see exactly where those setbacks hit, which I think might be helpful for people as they're looking at land.
That'd be terrific.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Your Honor. Yeah.
I had a couple of questions, too, and one of them was, obviously, it says, "Part of it is publicly owned sewer systems must be used where available." And I kind of had a similar highlight on the height. And that same section, there's also a lot of language about watercraft storage and how many square feet and landings and stairways. And my kind of question was, are we going to, you know, anybody that doesn't comply today, do they get grandfathered in? Or are they going to have to kind of apply for a variance? You know, I mean, are we going to cause anybody any grief because we adopt this and, you know, they're out of technically compliance?
See, any changes that we make today, anyone who's already in operation would be grandfathered in.
Right.
Yes. But moving forward, those would be the regulations that a new build would follow.
I had something else, but I forgot what it is.
I have one, just maybe request that the city attorney address the size of motors, wakes, engines, boats on some of the lakes within the city limits, whether or not we want to address that. I know that that, I know there's going to be people on both sides. I've had residents out in Hooton, right, there's portions of those lakes that are very narrow. And so if you get a big boat out there, it automatically creates a pretty big wake that is, in some people's view, very disruptive of the natural shoreline and also just recreational opportunities on the lake. And so there's going to be others who own those boats who strongly disagree with that. So maybe just would like it at least addressed by the city attorney of whether or not, because I had discussions, there have been discussions this year of whether or not the city should have specific ordinances related to that, or if we should go with county, DNR, state regulations throughout the region, not just within our city limits. And so maybe just a discussion on that would be appropriate in conjunction with this ordinance.
Okay.
My other piece was the planned unit developments. And obviously, we, I mean, Scott brought it up too, about obviously the dairy property, and we don't want to hinder ourselves, you know, that we're looking for somebody to develop it, and then the first thing we're going to have to ask them to do is, you have to apply for a variance. So--
Right, and I think the idea behind having very clear density requirements is to actually help them in their design process rather than to hinder.
Yeah. That's all I, so it's, it's helpful rather than, as you say--
And I'll just, and I can give a little bit more context to those changes, but when we initially went through the first dairy RFP process, that's one of the pieces of feedback we received, is that it's not clear what your density requirements would be in a shoreland zone. So if somebody wanted to come in and do a development like that, they wouldn't necessarily know how to, how to start with their, their planning. So that's why we've incorporated those at this point, to just maybe see if we can help clarify.
Thanks. Okay, would someone like to make a--
I might, Your Honor.
--motion that we bring this to the council for first reading and drafting on Monday night? There's a motion--
I'll second.
Jim, any questions of Clara?
Yes, just one other comment I'd make. In the language of this, there were several places where the idea apparently is to try and limit the view changing. So if you're on the water and you see the shoreline, and there's various things being developed, whether it's a watercraft storage, or a stairway, or a landing, or a whatever, there were statements to the effect that, you know, you can't cut down too many trees, and you can't, you know, make too many changes. And it just seems so subjective, you know, depending on who's out there on the boat, it looks great, or it looks terrible. And then how do you appeal any kind of a decision, and who's got the final word? To what degree is the DNR going to be telling us they can't do this, or what degree can we step in and say, this is fine with us, stay out of the way? You know, that's not real clear to me when there's so much subjective opinion in it.
The, the intention of the city having shoreland management ordinance is so that we can be upholding the minimum standards that the DNR is setting, so that the DNR is not the one that's coming in and making comments or decisions based on people's development of their homes. So we've, in the seventies, I think, or nineties, we adopted the model shoreline ordinance from the DNR. So this language is a carryover from one of their versions of their model ordinance. And then we've continued to, when we are making our updates based on their requirements, we have, again, continued to be updating based on their model ordinance and their bare minimum regulations. But again, the idea is that we would have those in our own ordinance so that we're upholding what the DNR wants, so the DNR is not coming in and making those decisions for us. Does that maybe help a little bit?
Yeah, I think to the, the degree to which we can have more control rather than give it over to the DNR, I appreciate that.
I see Laurel shaking her head back there. I assume that's the discussion at the planning level, or Planning Commission?
She just asked me to come, so--
Yep.
Good morning, Laurel.
Good morning. We, we want to minimize the regulation, too, and the changes, which is why we're not taking the whole thing, hook, line, and sinker. And so, like you said, like, are people grandfathered in? The majority of this is not changing. So the main changes is the height change, which just matches like our current height in the ordinance, which is thirty. And then the other changes are that PUD and getting these bodies of water in. All that other bulk of the stuff is the stuff we already have. And so the majority of these changes on docks and shoreline and all of that is existing wordage. So that's not changes that are coming down from, from Planning Commission. Planning Commission wanted to keep owners' flexibility while still not having the DNR in our hair, which is why we want to get this passed before they could pass the model ordinance on our behalf. Because the model ordinance, if this is concerning to people, is a whole nother level of what regulation would be. Is that fair?
Yeah, that is fair. And, and the--
And, and the model ordinance that we initially based our shoreline management section on was the model ordinance in the nineties, nineties.
Yep, and we talked, Clara and I talked together with Julie, which is our DNR person on a conference call. And she laid out like, DNR is happy if we do this much. So they are not upset with us for not taking the whole model ordinance on. We've met their benchmarks at this point.
Okay, thank you Laurel. Thanks Laurel, thanks Clara. Someone like to offer a motion that we bring this to the, oh, we did, we have a motion and said. Any further comments? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thanks Laurel, thanks Clara. Uh, next item of discussion is regarding the airport fuel system. Welcome our city engineer, Brian Yvall. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Your Honor and members of the council. Yeah, in September, the council accepted bids for the 2022 Airport Fuel System Replacement Project. That was awarded to Minnesota Pistorium Services, contingent on receiving the final state grant offer. And closing your packet is a final state grant offer, if acceptable. These materials could be procured over the winter and we could start construction next spring of 2023. Looking at the budgets, I included a cost breakdown table. The total estimated project cost is about eight hundred and eight thousand dollars. Of that, seventy percent of this project funded by the state is an amount of five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and six hundred dollars. Five hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. And our local share at thirty percent is two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. As proposed in the past, the city's Equipment Internal Service Fund is the proposed local match to fund this project. Funds are available, so therefore at this time, requesting resolution accepting the Minnesota State Grant Agreement for public improvement and greenery.
Thank you, Brian. And we can move this to the council through a motion?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Anthony. Uh, any questions of Brian? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up again is Brian with a professional services proposal for the old wastewater treatment.
Yes, thank you again. Pursuant to the recent Otter Tail Power Letter of Intent request, if you recall, they're requesting a small portion of land to construct a new substation located on our former old wastewater treatment site. That's just west of Piscadam. For like that letter intent, Otter Tail Power is requesting the city provide them with a environmental site assessment phase one and potentially a phase two if deemed necessary. But at this time, we're just looking at a phase one site assessment. Therefore, I solicited professional services proposal from McCoy Environmental. Their fee is eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for these services and anticipate, anticipated to take about three to four weeks. Therefore, I'm recommending to accept this proposal in the amount from McCoy Environmental for an amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I'll offer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Brian. Questions from the council, Scott?
Typically, when we have a project that's going to require some outside professional services, the dollar amounts are quite a bit more, quite a bit more than this. Eighteen hundred dollars is a pretty small fee for something when we're used to seeing things, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars for these professional fees. So apparently this project is pretty small. Or because it's only going to happen in, you know, three weeks, it's just a real quick hit and run kind of a thing. And it just requires somebody that has a certain something that we haven't got in-house to be able to handle. I guess where I'm going with this is if this is something that's only going to require such a small amount of work that it's an eighteen hundred dollar fee, why can't we just handle that ourself? Or what is it that they bring to the table that makes it worth even that small fee?
Well, you ask a good question. To answer your question, number one, these are professionals that do this. The environmental site assessment, it does have, it is a requirement that it does have a lot of items that you must adhere to if you file for the report. One of the reasons, I'm guessing, the fee might be a little bit reduced is number one, it is environmental site assessment. If you move to a phase two where you're actually doing physical forensics or anything on the site, this, then that's going to, the fee is going to be considerably higher. But also I did provide a lot of background information for them to prepare this report. So I suspect they reviewed it and everything and I provided enough adequate information for them, hence reflection of the fee.
Well, that's good. So if you've already done the work for them, I guess, then we don't have to pay them very much. So that's all right.
As long as it's not a sprat to catch a mackerel.
Yeah, thank you.
Say that again, a sprat to catch a mackerel?
Yeah.
What's that mean?
This is a teaser. And then, and then.
What's a sprat? It's a fish?
Yeah, well, it's a little fish.
A minnow?
Yeah, like a minnow.
No, you learn something every day. I've never heard that before. All right. Back at the, to the subject at hand.
We can vote on this, but I had another question before you, Jordan.
Yeah, sure. So we would need a res, a motion to bring this to the council. If some, Scott, thank you. Thank you, Justin. Scott, go ahead. Oh, just a question related to this? Have a motion to bring this to the council? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, Scott.
I remembered something after we already moved on past the THC thing and that was the question of taxes. I don't remember seeing anything in the discussion about whether or how the city, the city could or would do anything regarding taxes for these products or how the state is even approaching that. And so whether there's any preparation for that or not, I don't know. Maybe you were anticipating the question, maybe not. But it seems like on every other thing, especially with tobacco and alcohol, there's lots of taxes. And we didn't talk about that at all with this THC question. So before we get much further, I'd like to hear something about that, even if it's Monday. I don't know, if you've got anything for it today.
Monday's fine. Yeah, I'm going to guarantee that the state's thought of this one, so.
Yeah, and I don't know that we've got the authority to just come up with one. But if we do, fine. If we don't, we need to figure that out. So I, that's a question that needs some.
Good question, but yeah, I know that's the, one of the underlying arguments for moving forward on THC is that, you know, the tax revenue. So anyway, we can address that as we go along, but I'm sure that.
I've, I've got one, one additional thing that I would like to bring up is the, the traffic lights on Lincoln and Union, the pedestrian. Can we get somebody to look at like the relay or the timing so that when you actually press the button to cross the street, it at least goes to the white person so you can cross? It's getting cold and there was like, it takes, you have to wait for at least two cycles for those lights to change to white for somebody to cross. And it's, it's not, I mean, the, the lights on, you know, everywhere else, when they go through a sequence and they change to the white person so you can cross the street either whichever way, the opposite to the reds. But Lincoln and Union, I mean, you can sit there and press that thing forever and it never changes. And then you just, you just end up crossing the road. And, you know, now we've narrowed it up on the one side. It's, you know, traffic moves pretty fast through there. And there was a little old lady with a trolley the other day and she stood there forever waiting to, to cross. I helped her to cross. It's like, they, they won't run two of us over, hopefully, especially if you're a little old lady.
It's the first I've heard of it, but yes, we can.
Yeah, if you can put it on like a, I mean, it's just got to be an adjustment on a relay or a coding or something. It's a time delay on something. Thanks.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Thanks, Anthony. Anything else to come before the council? Where are you, Jordan? Have a good day, everyone.